Okay, we're live.
Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, August 26, 2020, and this special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order. I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding remotely. For the record, council members Shannon Williamson, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Groot are present. Council members Espiro, Darling, McAllister, and Groot are participating in council chambers. Council members Williamson and Rule are participating remotely. We'll now proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask Councilman Darling, would you please lead everyone with the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The purpose of this evening's meeting is for council to consider approval of a resolution declaring the value of a particular parcel of city property for the purpose of a property swap with a neighboring property owner and to schedule a public hearing on this matter. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will start us off with the presentation. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bear with me for a second while I share my screen. It's hard because it's hard to do the slideshow with all of the menus up here. I'm just going to work with this and hopefully you can see it well enough because the slideshow function sits under all the other menus that are right on top of it. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, the purpose of this agenda item, as Mayor Ronstadt mentioned, is to give a brief presentation to council for consideration of a declaration of value for a real property exchange, property that is owned by the city, and to schedule a public hearing for further consideration on September 16, 2020. So, much of our detailed presentation on this for any public that may be participating would obviously be at that public hearing and in a packet related to the public hearing. But we are here tonight to provide a brief summary to council and answer any initial questions that council members may have. The location that we are specifically discussing tonight is located right at the corner of Bridge Street and First Avenue in downtown Sandpoint. The city owns a parcel at that location that is delineated there by a purple triangle, or diamond, excuse me, and a private property owner, Bridge Street LLC, owns the adjacent parcels. It's actually two lots that are there that are delineated there in the purple circle, right at the corner of Bridge and First. As council will recall, back in February of last year, we had a significant fire in our downtown specifically at this location. There were two buildings, about six businesses at that location where the private property owns this property, and at that time, it was two different property owners. Subsequent to the cleanup from the fire, the demolition of the buildings, both parcels were acquired by Bridge Street LLC, who desires to build a multi-use development at that location. The city properties specifically, and we can go back to that visual if council desires, as I give this summary, the city owns a .31 acre parcel, just over 13,000 square feet, which we had appraised in July of this year at a property value of $410,000 or $5870 per square foot. Approximately half of this parcel is actually underwater, so about 6,700 square feet. It's just under 7,000 square feet that are upland. And as noted in the appraisal report, there is a 25-foot setback from high water for any development of this property. As it stands today, again, you can see where approximately half of the property is there underwater. We have our public boardwalk where we have restrictions there for public use only. They're adjacent between Sand Creek and the portion of the parcel that is upland. And the remainder of the parcel is, we have grass, some shrubage growing there. It's really a hillside, and it also includes the ramp, which goes down into the Gunning's Alley, Farman's Landing area there, coming down off of Bridge Street. That's on the city parcel. Again, our property value for that parcel is determined by an independent appraiser, was determined to be $410,000 or $5870 per square foot. The private property directly adjacent, so again noted by the purple circle, is owned by Bridge Street Development LLC. It's a single ownership. It includes two lots, combined for just over a quarter of an acre, just over 11,000 square feet, which is zoned for commercial mixed use. There is a property value, as determined by the city's independent appraiser on that property, of $5250 per square foot. Council will recall through our current Parks and Recreation Master Planning effort, we have been working on concepts for several different parks areas and recreation areas throughout Sandpoint. One is City Beach. The second that we've had much discussion about over the last several months is War Memorial Field. The third is our Sports Complex, Traverse, Centennial, and Great Northern. And our fourth location is our Sand Creek Downtown Waterfront Concept. And much of our discussion even prior to the last year, as this concept has been developed, has been related to a concept at the Farman's Landing area, which is right down here next to this building. I would note for council and the public that the Farman's Landing, as we know, the parcel that was acquired about approximately five years ago now, for purposes of stormwater treatment and management, is actually the property that runs along the parking lot adjacent to this parcel. The parcel in question, and we're talking about the parcel today that the city owns, that is not part of what we commonly call Farman's Landing. That is a separate parcel that the city has owned for many years. So, wasn't purchased by Water Fund, Waste Water Fund. It is a general fund property that it's owned by the city. City goals relative to this area and in discussion with the adjacent property owner. The city has, for a long-term basis, had a goal of trying to obtain additional right-of-way along Bridge Street in order to accommodate the amount of pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, as well as vehicular traffic that we have right there on Bridge Street, as well as along Bridge going on to First. And there was much discussion when the fire occurred, approximately a year and a half ago, that maybe that was an opportunity for the city to acquire one or both of the parcels that were lost to the fire. The property owners at the time were not interested in selling the parcels, and finally, when there was a decision for the sale, they sold to this one single property owner. Bridge Street LLC, when they came to us to talk with us about their interests, the city was clear right from the beginning that we had an interest in obtaining as much additional right-of-way on Bridge Street as a developer would possibly consider. In addition, as noted on the previous slide, we have a desire to implement the downtown waterfront concept that has been under discussion for the last several years. And finally, related to our goals for the purchase of Farman's Landing, we have, for a long-term, had a goal of improving stormwater management along Sand Creek, which includes in the fiscal 21-year budget dollars for shoring up the bank, bringing the bank out to the public boardwalk, and beginning the first stages of significant stormwater management improvement and treatment there along Farman's Landing, which would include treatment on that parcel again, that is part of this discussion tonight. The developer goals, when Bridge Street LLC came to the city, was to inquire whether the city would consider doing a trade for approximately 3,678 square feet of property of our city parcel, which would enable for a larger building to being constructed with improved waterfront access stairs and a landing that would be available for both private use as well as public use. The developer is interested in constructing a mixed-use single building rather than two buildings that were there previously, and intends to provide approximately 1,500 square feet of public and private deck space. So, similar in concept, obviously not in size, but in concept, in terms of how it's used to the public and private deck space that we see behind the Starbucks, the property on First over on the other side of Bridge Street, where we have deck space that property owners are using along there, but the public has access and uses that as a walkway access area as well. And then finally, the developer has been also very interested and has been significant part of our discussions in bringing back the Hound Pizza, which we lost to the fire, and with a desire to get building underway as soon as possible so that the Hound could reopen next year in 2021. As we got talking about the city's goals, as well as the developer's desires, we landed on the following proposed concept. The developer proposes to give the city additional right-of-way all along the former, their lot there on Bridge and First Street, which is denoted there in yellow. And that would become available and back to the city for right-of-way to allow us to make improvements to Bridge Street. Although tonight, we're not prepared to discuss what those improvements would be specifically. That's part of our multimodal transportation plan. We are preparing at the time of public hearing, if council agrees to schedule a public hearing, to include that in our presentation, what the concepts would be for Bridge Street. Again, the developer desires to acquire a portion of the city's property, and that portion is denoted there in the light blue on this image. You'll note that in the light blue, we also have an area that is boxed in with a yellow box. That portion would be the area that would be the just under 1,500 square foot deck that would be available for both public and private use. So, if this was to move forward, staff would propose that that would be an area where we would have a future public easement to ensure the public had access to that area. As denoted in our downtown waterfront concept, the vision for the area along that waterfront is actually to take out the ramp that provides access there, build a retaining wall along that level with stairways that come down from Bridge Street down to our property down below, and providing access not only to those businesses on the backside there that are currently facing First, but also down to our public boardwalk down there on Sand Creek. Laying this out and putting dollar amounts with this, and I know this is difficult for council probably to see on the screen. And I would note for the public that this is in our packet as well, so you can access this also there. See if I can blow this up at all. If not, I might just switch over to this. That helps. Get us a little bit smaller now. Sorry, I'm trying to read it in front of me. I'm trying to make sure you can read this also. Okay. So, as noted in our documents, our value for our city parcel, as determined by an appraiser in July of this year, is $410,000. As noted by our appraiser, the value of that property, for purposes of this transaction, is really the full value of the property. Because when properties are appraised, they're appraised on potential developable value, and we have limited really developable value with this property at all. And if a portion is included as a part of a property swap, that limits it even further, which really makes the property swap, the value of our property and any property swap, it's the full value of the property. With that said, for general developments and why we looked at a swap, because an argument might be made that we just put this, our property, up for sale for anyone that wants to purchase the property. Our property really has very limited value to an independent third-party that would want to develop it. When you consider the setbacks from the water, you consider the limited access to the property and any development. When the adjacent developer is developing, and so we're talking about ingress and egress to the property, it really limits what can be done there. And then we own the property, again, to the north side, the Farman's Landing property, which also limits what could be done with this because we aren't providing access to that property with an intention in providing access to a private development. It's really for a whole waterfront concept. So, that's where we landed, the value of our property at the full amount, at the appraised value of $410,000. Bridge Street LLC had indicated, again, along Bridge Street, a willingness to trade the city 3,678 square feet of property for right-of-way. And using the square footage that was noted by our appraiser, that has a value of $46,673. Upon construction of the developer's building, again with our waterfront concept, a retaining wall will need to go in to replace the ramp that exists along that property. In addition to that, our right-of-way along Bridge Street, and this was one of the real challenges for the city at the time of the fire, our right-of-way along Bridge Street, particularly our sidewalk, has been supported in the past and will need to be moving forward by their building retaining wall there for a building, a bridge, and First. That's why, for people, we've been struggling with a narrowed-down right-of-way there, our sidewalk going across Bridge Street. And that's because we've got supports there for that sidewalk infrastructure, but ultimately, it's the retaining wall of the building that will provide the support needed for our public right-of-way and for us to be able to reopen our sidewalk, and then further stretch the right-of-way along Bridge Street. The proposal would be that the Bridge Street LLC, they provide that retaining wall at the time that they're building, as well as build out the retaining wall where our existing ramp is. We have had someone independently, Bridge Street LLC, provided us an estimate of what that cost would be. We had our own independent contractor come in and provide us our own estimate for that cost, and that came in at $182,680 in terms of value to the city. As noted in our Farman's Landing concept, there would be stairways that provide access to that waterfront area coming down from Bridge Street. The city would propose that we construct those stairs, and we have an estimated cost that we have gotten on that of $150,000. Because those stairs would serve not only access to the city's property and to that waterfront area, public access, but they would also specifically provide access to that shared public-private deck space and benefit Bridge Street development as well. And so, we propose in this swap that the developer participate in the cost of those stairs at half of the cost of the construction of the stairs. So, that's $75,000. In addition, we would propose that Bridge Street construct a 12-foot sidewalk, and we've had some discussion on sidewalk. Do we accommodate some pavers in that, again, along Bridge Street, adjacent to the property line for a total of 258 linear feet? This includes new curb, ornamental lights, and street furniture, consistent with what the city provides along our right-of-way all throughout downtown. And we have a value of that at $74,055. Obviously, I don't drive this very often. And again, as noted earlier, Bridge Street LLC would provide a public easement for that deck area. With that, this leaves a balance to the city of $181,592 that would be provided to the city in cash, and would be used to support improvements along the waterfront, including landscape in that parcel that we currently own in that area, as well as the stormwater improvements, which includes pushing out the bank, building a bank stabilization wall, and the beginning of the stormwater treatment and improvements down at the Farman's Landing area, to include the parcel under discussion that would remain in city ownership. I would also note that with the proposal that we have, the estimated development value for this project at this time is approximately $16 million. The city benefits from that development, both in terms of additional property tax value coming on our construction rolls, impact fees, as well as future businesses. Again, this is envisioned as a mixed-use development. If we take the fiscal 20-year levy rate based on the estimated development value, that is property taxes to the city general fund in the amount of $75,200 per year from this development. Get us back to... So finally, relative to this, our requested council action is to declare property values and a minimum price the city will receive, as outlined on our last slide, and to set a public hearing for consideration of this property swap for the council meeting on September 16, 2020. Council have any questions?
Any questions, council? I can't see the chambers, so I'm going to ask staff to, Jennifer, if you can direct the questions or field the questions. That'd be great.
Not seeing any questions at this time, Mayor. Fonda, did I miss anything from your perspective on this? A reminder that Fonda Jovik is our legal counsel specifically for real property and planning and zoning.
No, Jennifer. I think you did a thorough job, consistent with our conversations, and you did not miss anything. And as indicated by Jennifer, the only thing that the council is responsible for at this point is declaring value and a desire to move forward with a public hearing.
Okay. So, okay, go ahead.
If Jennifer can go back to the parcel slide.
The first one, councilwoman. Is this the one? Okay.
So, would there be underground parking for this development?
I think she's asking us if there's underground parking for this development.
Would there be underground parking for the development?
Potentially. Yes, potentially.
Okay. And so, I'm just wondering about how they would access that if there is a wall built, and are they going to access it then from the side of the building, and how does that play into if any of those other building owners wanted to expand to the end of their lot line? Has there been any discussions with adjacent building owners?
There has been discussions with adjacent business owners relative to the downtown waterfront concept. Relative to this specific developer's design, no. Obviously, that will move forward separately through our planning and zoning process. But I know there's been some discussion on if there is underground parking, and I think Amanda can speak to where and how that access possibly could work.
Absolutely. Good question. The access would come from First and Main, so right there, adjacent to the Panda, down into Farman's Landing, to the other structure. I think what's important to know is that in the concept plan for Farman's Landing, the existing parking that is currently public parking at Farman's Landing would move further to the east, providing more continuous access and through access to that structure, as well as to the adjacent businesses.
I've got the waterfront concept back up. That helps. I can pull it up, and we can blow it up if needed.
Okay. If the adjacent business was to expand all the way out to the end of their parcel, that wouldn't be a conflict for this underground parking in this current building? I know those are kind of a lot of planning questions, but it...
You're correct, councilwoman.
Okay, so they're designing around that possibility.
The city is designing around that possibility with Farman's Landing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor? Can you hear me?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williamson has a question.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williamson has a question. Or a comment.
Is there any necessity to involve the Planning and Zoning Commission preliminarily, or is that come at a later stage in planning?
You want to defer to Fonda or do you want? Fonda, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. There's no need to involve the Planning Commission at this stage. At this point, it's a council responsibility to declare value and to make a declaration as to whether or not to move to public hearing. And that's all that's being considered right now. So there's no need to involve planning yet, but there may be a point down the road where planning would be involved.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for declaration of value of property and to schedule a public hearing for council's regular meeting on September 16th, 2020. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Sprow?
Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.